I will now call to order. A public hearing of objections on amendment MP twenty dash oh three. To municipal plan MP twenty dash oh one. And amendment Z twenty one dash oh two to zoning by law. Said twenty one dash oh one to rezone one oh eight Sophia Street. Uh, the meeting is being held on Thursday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty one. At six P M and six P M respective, six fifteen P M respectively. Turning to attendance of council. I note that all members of council are in attendance. With the exception of councillor Bishop, who will be unable to be in attendance this evening. And councillor Harrison, who may arrive uh at a later date, but is not here at the moment. Uh, I will now look for a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll move your worship.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor, and now I saw councillor Gru, who can second it, thank you. All in favor of the agenda as uh written, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. I'll now move to disclosure of conflict of interest on any matter before us. Hearing none, we'll move ahead. Uh, I will turn the matter first over to uh. Mister Knopper, who has a, a report that he wishes to present to uh council. Uh, prior to the hearing of objections, and then we will go. To Mister Alexander Gopin, our planner, who will also give us a presentation.
Thank you, your worship, I will note that councillor Harrison has arrived.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you councillor Harrison.
So, for the public and council to know, um, uh, we did host the pub, this is the public hearing of objections for the zoning bylaws. Said twenty one oh two and the MP twenty oh three. Uh, from this, we have received, uh, the staff report that I provided to council this afternoon, at that time, we had received eighty six letters. Uh, both of support and objection, uh, at this time, I have received ninety six letters in total. Uh, from the public, so letters of support, uh, provided are approx, are eighty, eighty-five letters with. Uh, objection letters of eleven that came in. So, for council to know, the following concerns that were brought forward. Concerns were, uh, the lack of due process on the sale of the one oh eight Sophia Street. What was done to inform the public, why were the property owners not, uh, provided polling letters? The second question series was, what would be the future use of the property if the veterinarians were to cease operations? Would the property still be rated commercial? Why is council considering this service at one oh eight Sophia Street? When there is a need for residential properties and missing out on the opportunity for housing? Uh, has council considered the taxation between residential and commercial properties? What is the difference between mixed use and commercial on both amendments? Has there been any a- assessment on traffic, safety, parking, noise, or disturbances? And will the property be maintained, or be maintaining the historical character that it is? So those were the main general concerns that were through the letters. And I will now provide it to Mister Gopin to present his presentation.
Thank you Mister Knopper.
Thank you, uh, your worship, Mister Knopper, council. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna go through a presentation here, and I'm, I'm hoping it'll address most of the concerns that have been brought up. Um, it really doesn't seem like the concerns are around the vet clinic itself, it's around, uh, more on future uses and. What that potential is, um, but just a quick bit of background, this has been a medical clinic for over fifty years. The town became owners in two thousand and nine, as uh, most folks know, the new wellness center in the arena is now open. Um, so this is a surplus property, it was put on the market. Conditional agreement was entered into with doctors Tammy Matheson and Krista McAllister. Um, who are involved, uh, Chris, Doctor McAllister is an owner and, and Doctor Matheson is. Um, involved with the Mayfield Veterinary Clinic in Saint Stephen. Um, for the use to, uh, happen there. Uh, because it's currently zone serviced residential, the doctor's office had been legally non-conforming. There had to be an application to rezone, um, to mixed use for the new veterinary clinic. And the reason why the mixed use zone was chosen, um, it allows for uses in different zones. Um, and one of those is the central commercial zone, the central commercial zone allows for. Uh, commercial uses which, which a veterinary clinic falls under, it, it's also institutional, but it, um, is allowed in both zones. And secondary residential uses, the institutional does not, zone does not allow for residential uses. Um, and. Part of the future plans with this were a potential residential use, uh, an apartment, something like that. And, uh, as was noted, the town does need housing, um, so. That's why the mixed use zone was chosen instead of the institutional zone. Um, now. There isn't just the zoning map, there's also what's called a generalized future land use map, that's part of the municipal plan, it's more general. Um, whereas, uh, zoning bottle will have, you, you know, service residential, estate residential, different types of. High density, multiple residential, the generalized feature on this map would just show residential for all of those areas. Um, so under that, the mixed use zone is commercial, um, but it does. Uh, have many residential properties in it, it has some commercial properties, it's a very mixed use zone. Um, and, and to rezone to that. You can't just rezone, you also have to do the municipal plan amendment to that generalized future land use map, so that's. Um, hopefully that explains that sort of terminology. And that's the property there on the zoning map, uh, showing it serviced residential. There's the aerial view of the property. Um, there's a street view of the front.
We can't see anything that you're presenting.
I'm so sorry, I think I forgot to share my screen.
There we go.
Still isn't the most awkward thing that's happened in a council Zoom meeting, um. It's the most awkward thing I've done now, so my apologies, um, I'll try and go through the background quickly. Um, you probably heard me say this already, so it's a medical clinic for over fifty years, the town became owners in two thousand and nine, new wellness center is now open. Uh, the property was put on the market, conditional agreement entered into with doctors Tammy Matheson and Krista McAllister, who are involved with the Mayfield Veterinary Clinic. Um, application to rezone to mixed use, uh, it's currently serviced residential. Mixed use is a zone as opposed to, um, the municipal plan, generalized feature land use map, and. Um, the reason why that zone was chosen instead of the institutional zone, both of them allow for, uh, veterinary clinics or medical clinics. Um, but the institutional zone does not allow residential uses, and there's a possibility of a secondary residential use for this property. Um. I won't go through all this, uh. This is probably where, um, everyone realized I wasn't sharing my screen, so. Uh, this is the zoning map showing the property is serviced residential, um, and then there's the aerial view of the property. There is the street view, uh, front of the property. And when we're looking at rezonings and municipal plan amendments, we definitely want to look at what the municipal plan policies that are relevant. Um, and in this case, there's an economic policy that councils shall seek to provide an economic climate. Conducive to investment and growth of year unemployment opportunities while protecting and enhancing the quality of life in Saint Andrews. Um, and this, uh, this business would have year round employment for several individuals. And of course, it would enhance the quality of life for pet owners. Um, institutional policies, councils shall acknowledge that residents' wellness, healthcare facilities and services are an important element of the community. And a significant factor in attracting and retaining residents. Um, people with pets, I'm sure you know, when your animals get sick, uh, it's not a fun time for anybody, so. Um, animal health and human health are very interlinked, and in terms of intensity of use, they're also, uh, very similar. Um, land uses. So, as I just mentioned, yep, they're very, they're, they're fairly similar in terms of, um, parking, in terms of. Uh, potential disturbances, um, it, it's a very, very similar land use and. Um. There was no real concern that it would change traffic patterns or lead to more parking or anything. Um, very different than what's been happening there for quite some time. Uh, and there's really been no, no incident in that time with that particular land use, and again, we expect this one to be very similar. Uh, the main difference is you might have animals kept overnight, I think that's, that's going to be a very rare occurrence. Um, and the kennels will all be inside, they'll be soundproofed. Um, so really, noise should not be an issue at all, uh, and, and if it is, there's the town's noise by law that would be in effect and could enforce. Um, when you think about where veterinarians are in the region, the closest ones are in Saint Stephen and Saint George. Uh, so Saint Andrews does not have a vet currently, so anybody needing veterinary services in Saint Andrews is driving, uh, twenty to thirty minutes to another community. Um, and obviously, this would be great for existing pet owners, but also when, um, future residents are maybe thinking about the town of Saint Andrews. And they see that, oh, it is a vet clinic, that, that will be an attractive thing. Um, and finally, with the town plot and heritage features, uh, of course, that, those are very important, um, assets for the town. So making sure that those aren't affected by this rezoning, um, so. There are conditions to preserve the specific features, um, that are the heritage features that can be set as part of the rezoning process. And, um, I'll go through these conditions now, and I think, um. When we look at rezonings and, and especially municipal plan amendments, they do. Um, oftentimes lead to a change, but with appropriate conditions, uh, it, it's. That change should be able to be accommodated without an additional impact on the neighborhood. Um, so these conditions are set by council, uh, before a third reading of the amending bylaws. And they require a public process to be amended, so, um, very similar to, uh, rezoning, it would basically have to go through that same process. So these are the conditions, all kennels must be in the main building. Um, and I think this one is, is probably what should alleviate most people's concerns. That any future use must be similar to or compatible with the veterinary clinic and the surrounding residential neighborhood. In the opinion of the development officer, and if council wants, um. Instead of the development officer, if they would like to be in control of that. Uh, decision, it could be in the opinion of council, so that's, that's something for council to think about. Um, and then in terms of heritage, the appearance of the upper windows and gables must be maintained. If repair of an existing window or gable element is not possible, replacement must be of the same building materials or adequate facsimile size and style of the element being replaced. And that vinyl siding must not be used in any repair restoration, if restoration of the current siding is not possible. Materials that mimic the current siding, such as engineered wood, concrete, fiberboard, or equivalent must be used. So that's it for me, um, for now, unless there are questions. And I suppose the applicants are here as well, so they can answer questions too.
Thank you, Mister Gopin, um, Mister Knopper, um.
Your, your worship currently at this point, I have not received any emails, uh, for anybody asking to speak directly to council. Um, we can keep it open at this point, uh, would you like to have any discussion with, uh, Doctor Matheson?
I think we should, uh, offer them the opportunity to speak if they wish.
Doctor Matheson, you have your opportunity to speak to council if you'd like.
Sure, um. I think Xander had covered most of the things we were discussing as far as the heritage property and. The dogs, I actually have a schematic, the dog kennels will be in the center of the building. And there's interior walls and exterior walls between them, and it'll be a soundproof room, so. There shouldn't be any dogs heard, except if they're outside walking down the street, so, um, and as far as. The historical, we, you know, we actually love the Maxwell Room, we're trying to figure out some way to. Use that space without destroying it, so, and that's in the part that we're, we're discussing about maybe doing an apartment. The apartment may very well be for staff members. Or vets from out of town that we have, like, if we go on vacation, somebody's got to be there, so, to cover that end of it, so that's where we've discussed the. But like I say, the Maxwell Room is just kind of like, oh, that's wild up there, so, it'd be nice to conserve that. So we're very well into the heritage end of it, and we can scrape paint and put paint on wooden walls for a long time. Um, um, and as far as the polling, that you had a question about polling. We were never given the opportunity to, to do any polling, and we didn't think that that was in our, our wheelhouse to do, so we never did any of that, but. I guess if we had. Thought about it, we would have done it, I don't know. So, that's all I have, Krista, do you have anything to?
No, I think, um, you know, to, to my point, it, it has been used as a very similar. Um, facility for fifty years, and when we put the offer in. We were just told that it had to be rezoned, and it didn't seem like it was going to be an issue, and then we found out about. All the bylaws were changing at the same time, so it's taken us a long time to find a suitable building in Saint Andrews, we really do want to be in Saint Andrews. The options are very limited for us, this building suits our needs, it gives us a quick turnaround time to be up and operating, hopefully by. Uh, mid-July or August, if we can move forward quickly and get the renovations done. We'll initially be using three quarters of the building as the clinic, and then deciding what we're going to do, uh, with the rest later on. So, um, you know, if this zoning does not work out for us, then. You know, I don't know that Saint Andrews will work out for us either.
And we did look into the parking as well, um, there are six or seven spots out front. And in the bu, the new bylaws, and I think they were in the old bylaws, it said with a medical clinic. Which I assume that's what we be listed under, it was three parking spaces per exam room, and we have three exam rooms planned, which means we need nine parking spaces. And there is the property where it is an L shape, there are opportunity for probably ten parking spaces on the other side. So I think we're covered on that end of it as well.
Hey, thank you doctors, appreciate that.
Not a problem.
So, Knopper, is there anyone who wishes to speak at this point in time?
Uh, your worship, I had somebody email me, I'm just waiting for a contact back, I would, uh, request that we leave it open here for at least another few minutes. If I don't receive an email back, uh, again, we, we do have a special meeting of council at six thirty. Uh, we can adjourn in a few minutes after that, you do have councillor Gru that's got a question or would like to speak.
Okay, councillor Gru.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I have more, I, it's not really a question, it's a point of order, I think. Is, um, unfortunately, one of the, uh, councillors at the table. Has taken to social media to promote a veterinary clinic and encourage people to write into council. Uh, this is supposed to be an impartial notice of objections, where council listens to the views of the public. Not, uh, a lobbying effort to impose a decision on local property owners. And, um, I would like to read the text of that Facebook post. Um, for the record, so that it is part of the record of this notice of objections. And I'll quote. Uh, it says, as some of you, some, some may know. The town is looking to rezone the old medical center.
Order, your worship, I, I don't see the point in reading this into the record.
You can't interrupt the point of order, councillor Gomishel. I'm reading into the record something that has been posted, that is inappropriate, that should not have been posted.
I have a point of order.
Decision, the mayor's.
Councillors, councillors, one at a time, councillor Gru has the floor, I do, uh, I will. Make a ruling on this, and if you, and if the other members of council assist, my understanding of that, uh. I'm going to intervene here, my understanding of that post that was made. Uh, by a councillor was made on his personal, uh, Facebook account, not on the town account. So he, I don't think he identified himself as a councillor, although everyone knew he was, it's a small town. Uh, so I don't see the point of this, actually.
I have no problem if you read it in, I just don't think it was inappropriate. We want people to engage, had I not written that, we would have eighty less letters supporting this valuable venture. Cause no one thought they had to write in to defend the idea. And I bet we would have got tripped up on a few letters against it. So I, yeah, read it in, it's what I wrote, I agree with it a hundred percent.
May I continue, your worship, with my comments?
Um, councillor Gru, I will allow it, uh, given that the person that, uh, wrote it has given his permission, carry on.
Thank you, your worship. As some may know, the town is looking to rezone the old medical center to be a veterinary, a vet clinic. It is important that all those who support this effort make the town know you support it. Please both email the town and join the hearing of objections on the fif, April fifteenth. To let us, to tell us you support this decision. The forces of NIMBYism are strong in this town, and without solid support. Our town council can often go a bit weak in the knees when confronting it. If it is the only voice we hear, then sometimes it is hard to do otherwise. So if you want a local vet clinic in this town, and think the old medical center is a good place to put it. Then please, email the town and state your support at the April fifteenth Zoom meeting. Commenting on this post may be fun or cathartic, but it will not end up in front of the six councillors who need to make the decision. Email the town and attend the Zoom meeting. And I, uh, in my opinion, it's kind of, I, I think self-defeating or ironic. That we're calling people the local property owners. Uh, you're characterizing them as NIMBY, and, and I think it's important that we respect their rights. And also, I think it's a bit, uh, disrespectful to refer to the council as weaken the knees. Um, personally myself, I, I support the idea of a veterinary clinic, I'll probably be one of your customers. But I would also like to respect the rights of the adjacent property owners. Uh, I, I believe that they, they should be respected, we should be listening to their views with an impartial. Uh, in an impartial manner, and making, uh, approaching this in an open mind, and making a decision. Uh, in that manner. Uh, council has acted in good faith and directed staff to sell a surplus municipal property. But the sale of the property was conditional upon the, the, the property being rezoned. And the municipal plan being amended. So in my opinion, and I stated this at first reading. This puts the council in a conflict of interest situation, where the town stands to gain financially. By this rezoning of the property. So, and now there's a push to accelerate, uh, the passage of these amendments, and we have a councillor lobbying on social media. So, my concern here is, what are the local residents or the, the adjacent neighbors supposed to think? Is, is right now, you know, is, is this a done deal, has it already been decided? And their voices don't matter, is that the message we want to send? Thank you very much.
If councillor Gru is done, here's the problem, and I've been on here for five years now. So I'll give you my view on the problem in general, not of any personality, but just in general. Is that when we have something like this, we're going to only hear from the few people that have a really big negative opinion. That happens every time, if you want the great mass of people to chime in. You have to tell them what's going on, and what I saw that was going on was NIMBYism. I, I, it, it is what it is, call it a bad term, a good term, but people get a bit touchy when you do something right beside them. Here's the interesting thing, in a variance application, that is more relevant. Then we have to pull the hundred yard pole, or whatever it is, hundred meters. But as I understand it, cause a zoning, rezoning, and a municipal plan change affects the whole community. So the whole community gets to chime in, so I alerted the whole community, I don't see what, I, isn't this good? When was the last time you got eighty letters on anything? So, I, 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 I really don't see what was inappropriate about this. And I don't think council's not supposed to have a point of view. We have sixteen people running for council right now, I sure to hell hope. They have points of view, they have a vision for what our town can be. That they're not just, like, we, we have two highly competent bureaucrats that work for us, Paul and we have Chris. We don't need six more bureaucrats nitpicking, we need people with vision that want to take this town into the future. So yeah, you, sometimes you gotta go and ask people what they think, you, you tell them what you think, what either, then you ask what they think. And we got eighty letters of what people think on this issue, I think it was a good outcome, I have no. I mean, I, I, I honestly, I, I don't know why we wouldn't want this outcome, this amount of input. So those are my thoughts on this.
Thank you councillor Harrison, thank you councillor Gru, we're going to cut that debate off, this is not a choice for debate this evening. But I allowed that because it was necessary. Where, Mister Knopper, is there anyone else who wishes to speak by way of objection or support?
Your worship, I have not received any further emails or correspondence, so we can adjourn as necessary.
I just want to make one comment, uh, the, uh, just for clarification. This was, the purpose of this meeting was to do what we did, no decisions have been made, uh, at all. But this will come forward to council, so I would, uh, ask council to think about what has happened here tonight carefully. And all of the submissions that we've received, and this will come forward to council for a decision at some point in the future. Thank you. Um, I'll look for a motion to adjourn, if there's nobody on for questions, uh.
They're moved.
I saw move, second.
Okay. On favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, and thank you to the public for participating. Knopper, I will now call to order a special council meeting on Thursday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty one. At six thirty P M. Noting in attendance that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of councillor Bishop, who could not be with us this evening. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as written. Thank you councillor Gru, and a seconder.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Deputy Mayor Henderson, thank you, uh. All in favor of the agenda as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved, I'll now move to disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, uh, we have no presentations, I'll move directly to the only item on the agenda. The introduction, consideration, passing of bylaws and motions, and this is F A twenty one oh four oh one. Twenty twenty one dash oh five, King and Sophia Street Water and Sewer Upgrades Tender Award. Uh, and so I will, uh, um, bring this forward, I'll, uh, councillor Gru. Could you, uh, be councillor Bishop this evening and bring this matter forward?
Certainly, your worship, uh, reference number F A two one zero four zero one. The subject is, uh, TSA two zero two one dash zero five. King and Sophia Street Water and Sewer Upgrades Tender Awarding. The background, TSA two zero, two, twenty twenty one dash zero five. King and Sophia Street Water and Sewer Tender closed on April first, twenty twenty one at two P M. When the bids were open, there were eight bidders, there was Midi Construction Limited. Fairville Construction Limited, L Sanford and Sons Limited, Maguire Excavating Limited. N R B Construction Company Limited, Terra X Incorporated. Fundy Contractors Limited, and Coastal Enterprise Limited. Attached to this motion is a summary report from CBCL Limited. On their review of the submitted tenders and their recommendation to award the tender contract. The motion is that council award tender TSA twenty twenty one dash zero five. To Midi Construction for the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, one forty-three and fifty cents. Including H S T to complete the King and Sophia Street Water and Sewer Upgrades.
If I have a seconder for that motion, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Akri, any questions, council?
I think it's great it came in under bid.
No, no questions, I'll call the question then, all in favor of awarding the tender as read, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is approved, and that tender is awarded. Um, council, thank you very much, uh, I think that, uh. Going to look for a motion to adjourn, I know, uh. Any, uh.
Second.
Councillor Akri, councillor Gomishel.
All in favor of adjourning, do you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we're adjourned, thank you council, and. Any opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, council, and staff can now get busy and get some construction work done.